I call to order the Board of County Commissioners. We're gonna start with the special meeting today, April 22nd, 2014. Happy Earth Day. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag and the state of New Mexico, the universal principle of righteousness among the united cultures.
Are there any changes need to come on the special meeting agenda?
None that I know of, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a motion to approve the special meeting agenda? Motion is second to approve the special meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolution. Approve or disapprove resolution number R-1417. Notice of intent to adopt an ordinance establishing a firefighting and emergency response authority, fire equipment procurement standards, and rules regarding fire hazards applicable to the general public, and imposition of burn restrictions during severe drought and other fire emergencies. John, you wanna go over that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Yeah, we've brought this in front of you as the emergency ordinance to put in place because of the conditions we've had, I mean, sorry, the resolution, because of the conditions that we've had out there, the dry fuels, we've had people, seems like almost every day we've been getting some type of fire. Most, I think all of them have been human caused at this point in time. Nothing has been by, because of lightning strikes or anything. We've had a little rain this past weekend, but it wasn't enough to, to actually dampen the fire danger that we have out there. I know we've been following, we're not as extreme as we were in the past years with the drought, but we are in high grass conditions that are dry. And each day, it seems like the drought conditions are continuing to get worse. I noticed on the news this morning, the upper half of the state is in extreme fire conditions for today because of the winds that we've had and the dry conditions. So it just continues to get worse every day without any major rains in sight. So we wanted to put this in place and then we'll go forward. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is the ordinance that we've talked about a couple times at past meetings where the commission was interested in putting procedures in place to where the fire management officer and, or the county manager could put those, put restrictions in place, like burn restrictions or flame restrictions, without having to come to the commissioners. So what I did is I took the old Fire Code ordinance and, which, the old Fire Code ordinance had a section where it did give some authority to the fire association, but we really never used that much. I took that section out and then put in the section that delegates the authority to the fire management officer or the county manager. And I also put in the subsequent restrictions that we, that we normally put in the emergency ordinance.
So that ordinance is not here?
Actually, it's that second.
You have the draft?
Oh, here it is.
Okay. Yeah. So it'll be on file at the clerk's office for two weeks for comment.
And I don't, are your copies highlighted at all?
No, they're not.
Let's see, if you look on page four, that's where I've inserted the, the new procedures. And really, I just, I based this on how Silver City set their, their ordinance out. And I also just sort of put in how I think it would work for the county. So if you have any suggestions, just let me know.
So it's either or?
Yes. But I suspect the fire management officer would always, always consult with the county manager. Let me guess. And for right now, all we're doing today, as you're probably aware, is we're passing the resolution of intent so that we can go ahead and put notice in the paper, and put a copy over in the clerk's office for the public to review, and also to give you guys time to review. And then in two weeks, we'll put the ordinance on at the next regular meeting.
And it'll be changed after?
Yes. And that two week period will be like time for comments, and if you all have further suggestions, please let me know. The rest of, sorry, the rest of the ordinance is very similar to the previous Fire Code ordinance.
Do you have something?
No, we're ready for a motion.
Chair.
I have a motion to approve resolution R-1417, notice of intent to adopt an ordinance of cybercrime firefighting and emergency response authority, fire equipment procurement standards, fire, and rules regulating fire hazards applicable to the general public and imposition of burn restrictions during severe drought and other fire emergencies.
Can I second? There's a motion, a second to approve. Is there a number on this resolution?
R-1417.
There's a motion, R-1417. There's a motion to approve R-1417. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
And all those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I don't think that should. So the next item is adjournment of the special meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
We've called order the Board of County Commissioners' Work Session for April 22nd, 2014. Can we get an approval on the?
Second.
Agenda? All those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grand County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grand County Resolution Number R-1401, we welcome the public to attend county work session, but there will be no public input permitted at this meeting. At this time, we'll review the April 24th, 2014 regular meeting agenda. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Start off that we're going to have a public hearing for consideration of fireworks proclamation. That'll be discussion regarding the consideration of a proclamation declaring extreme or severe drought conditions imposing imposition of fireworks restrictions, and then the approval of a proclamation declaring the extreme or severe drought conditions imposition of fireworks restrictions. These, I don't know if you wanna talk about this for Randy?
I'll just explain what we have. Mr. Chairman, in the first hearing, we'll consider the proclamation, which you're all familiar with from the past year, and behind that proclamation, you'll see printouts from the National Predictive Services, which is where we always gather our information to let us know, or to give information on the drought conditions and fuel conditions and basic fire conditions. And I'll let Randy go into this more. And then for the next, for the following hearing on the agenda will be the emergency ordinance that we normally pass when we're in emergency situations, and that will also be based on those same handouts that you'll see. And the reason we're gonna go ahead and do the emergency ordinance, which is the one that puts the burn restrictions in place, the same exact one that we used last year, is to cover the next two weeks that we are waiting for the permanent ordinance, the one that we just approved the resolution for in our special meeting. So we'll have this emergency ordinance in place for a couple weeks, and then once that permanent ordinance is adopted, or if, if the commission decides to adopt it, that will repeal this emergency ordinance. So what you'll see on Thursday at the hearings is the proclamation for the fireworks, which is, that's the same as last year as well, and then the emergency ordinance for burn restrictions.
Okay, any questions?
Randy has nothing to add.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, excuse me for being late, but I was on the phone with the state FMO from the state, uh, state forestry. They are in progress right now, drafting a letter from the governor asking the local counties to review their drought situation and make the appropriate recommendations as far as restrictions. So I apologize for being late for that. But if you look at your, your chart there with the weather conditions from the National Superior Wildfire Potential Outlook, if you look, they'll have the southwest there, and it talks about it pretty simply, normal sufficient wildland fire potential for southwest is expected for April by the end of May. Expect a rapid increase in sufficient wildland fire potential in eastern Arizona and western New Mexico. Normal potential will continue to expand. So that's what we're basing it on, we're looking at this. I've been in conversation with the Forest Service, with the state forestry, with the city, they are, the town of Silver City is, is not issuing ban, uh, burn permits at this, this time. So I think this is another step where we wanna go for public safety, to protect our communities, as far as, we've already had several fires in the area, most of them, or all of them, human caused, almost burned two homes down, some outbuildings burned down. We had a fire in Georgetown, which we were able to work with the Forest Service on getting that out. That could have been very, very damaging if it would've got away from us. So I'm in full support of whatever the county commission moves on this fire restriction.
Thank you.
I want to point out to the commissioners, if you look at your packet backing up, it's about the fourth page in, it's got the, the maps going down the side of it that have the colors, the blue and all that. You'll notice that the state of New Mexico is almost completely red in every one of those for the hundred hour fuels, the ignition components, and, and the moisture levels, and the thousand hour fuel moisture levels, that one right there. We're almost red every time in it, so we're, that's where we're sitting, is right in the middle of that hotspot that is, everywhere else is, slowly starts to turn red or yellow, but we're always in every one of those depictions, models, we're red, as having high, high fuel sources and no moisture. So that's, that's where Randy's been looking at and we're trying to contain.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on. We've got a lot of people who have appointments today, so we'll take our time and do what we have to do, but if we can expedite this.
Go to expenditure report, as you'll see, we're finding, had a meeting two weeks ago and saw our expenditure listing is $649,099.35. We're back down to, basically, our normal expenditures for a two week period with payroll and our expenditures. We've got no extraordinary in there, and so that's typically what we see, is about $650,000. The next is your cash flow analysis, we're going to add this to the agenda, it'll be added as item C for you. The, you have it as, as of March 31st. We started July 1, 2013, at $2,451,424. We have year-to-date revenues of $6,467,729. We've done $39,279 in transfers. We've had operating expenditures of $2,285,465. Salaries and benefits of $4,577,616, leaving a cash balance at March 31st of $2,016,793, with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $166,430, leaves a cash balance at June 30th, 2014 of $2,183,223. Less the required reserve of $2,105,342, leaves a surplus of $77,881. The second page is the budgeted revenues. We've done, we've collected 61.72% of the budgeted revenues as of the end of March. And the next is the transfers, we've done 2.43% of the budgeted transfers. The next is the road department. We started the year at $267,657. We have year-to-date revenues of $461,742. Operating expenditures of $212,090. Salaries and benefits of $948,478, leaves a cash balance at March 31st of a negative $431,169, with projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $563,874, leaves a cash balance of $132,705, with less the required reserve of $130,935, leaves a surplus at June 30th of, of $1,770 in the road fund. The next is the corrections. We started July 1, 2013 at $407. We've had year-to-date revenues of $672,493. Operating expenditures of $584,303. Salaries and benefits of $1,468,766, leaves a cash balance at March 31st of a negative $1,380,169. Less the projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2014 of a positive $1,385,038, leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2014 of $4,868. And as I've stated in the past, we do those transfers towards this time of year, so those negatives will reverse throughout at the beginning.
Okay.
The next item is to administer the oath to detention center officers and issue badges. This is for all those officers that couldn't make it the last time because they were on duty, so we're gonna bring those officers in and have the commission go ahead and administer the oath, and we'll pass out the badges to them to complete that at the detention center.
Can you count how many, Joseph? Are those, if you said, and ten that weren't able to attend because they're working or off?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. The next item is to approve or disapprove a proclamation declaring the week of May 18 through 24, 2014, is Emergency Medical Services Week. It's something that the commission does every year to recognize everybody in the emergency medical services field. A lot of times, those people don't get recognition, they just get called on to help you, and if they don't do everything correctly, they're brought out and beat up, but they're never praised for the good work that they do and all the lives that they do save on a daily basis. And so that's what, the commission has started doing this in the past, and we do it each year, just to recognize all those individuals because they don't get any other credit any other way.
Okay.
The next is contracts and agreements. This is approve/disapprove agreement number A-14-10, agreement with New Mexico Children, Youth and Families Department for Services through the Juvenile Justice Continuum Program. This is a program that we've been a fiscal agent for in the past to do the restorative justice, the, the circles in the schools and all that through the district court and working with Margaret Bagay. That grant, the previous grant had ran out, that group had submitted for this one, and they were awarded a total of $69,385. Grant County will be the fiscal agent, it doesn't cost us anything out of our general fund, just a little bit of time to help administer, but this is one of those that really, Margaret and her group really worked good on and, and worked with us, and we don't have issues when they try and buy something or putting together contracts to pay people. It's a good program. Commissioner Hall and myself attend the, the board meetings of the community group that is really working on trying to do more for this, and so I, I think it's beneficial to go forward and continue to go forward with this grant as much as we can. In the past, it's always been the tri-county area, it was Grant County, Hidalgo County, and Luna County. This time, they've submitted for Grant County only, so they've kind of cut the other two out, and it's just gonna be services provided in Grant County for the $69,385. The next item is approve/disapprove resolution R-1418, authorizing the transfer of Grant County parcel to Freeport-McMoran Chino Mines Company. This is, we've been working on for a while with the Chino Mines, Freeport-McMoran, that we will take a piece of property that we currently don't do anything with, it's, it's surrounded by Freeport property currently, and we're going to transfer it for a parcel that we will use for the Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Department to build a fire station right across the street from the Hanover Outpost area, right there. There's a water shed on that side of the street, we're looking at three acres there, and also we're going to, we've worked out some other pieces of that deal with them to work on the cemetery road. So, but that's what this'll do, is give us authority to transfer that piece to finish up. Ms. Robinson's been working on it for a long time now, seems like.
Once we get the okay, or the transfer, how long would it take before we start on the, on the road easement for the cemetery?
Um, Earl?
Because that's one thing I, I get. Talked to in the public all the time, you know?
No. We've got the easement, it's already laid out. I don't know what Earl's schedule would be to when, once we finalize all the documents with them.
Probably June.
We've got the first two weeks of June scheduled for chip seal, and soon as we get it, we'll start on that Santa Rita subdivision, and probably that, that road, get all the paperwork and stuff done, yeah.
Or any season is.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been a long time coming, but it's also something that wasn't gonna happen. There's been a lot of work going to get this done, yes.
Just to be clear, this step is, now we're just getting authority to proceed. Attached, you can see a draft of the exchange agreement, and we're still in that stage of communicating back and forth attorneys. And what we'll do is, we also need to get permission from the state to proceed with the disposal of the property, that's part of, just a statutory requirement. So that is why we're putting this resolution in front of you, so that we can go ahead and submit that to the state. We're also still waiting for a phase one environmental. So there are just a few, few more details that we have to get worked out, but we are very close. I put in preliminarily that we'll try to close by May 31st, and I think I put Earl has 120 days. I think that's what he and I discussed, to get the road done, because we were taking into consideration possible monsoon season that might slow it down. So that, that's the goal.
Yeah, so if we close, yeah, if we close on time, if we can meet that May 31st closer, then Mr. Moore can start in the June. So it all hinges on that. It's, that's been the real issue with this, is we have to rely on so many other people to get us information outside of Grant County. And, and we continue to call and debug and...
Freeport-McMoran working with us, but they've got more lawyers than the federal government, it seems like.
Yeah.
They have them good.
So, yeah, once all of us got out of the way and let Abby and their attorney just start talking about this information, it got a lot easier. So, the next item is a bid for the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department Main Station Edition. We discussed this, Tyrone has gone out for a loan to the New Mexico Finance Authority to add on some training rooms and the restrooms at the fire station that's at the Tyrone townsite. They have gone out for bid, you have in your packet the bid tally sheet from the architect, and everything came in. We had six bidders, and our low bidder that he's recommending to you all did come in in the budget. And so we should be on budget for that project, there should be no problem. If the commission awards that on Thursday to that, we will can start to work on the contract with that, we'll start to work on the contract with that bidder and get that project going, since the loan is already in place and we've sent the closing documents up for that, we've approved them and sent those up. So this is the last piece to get that project going, the architecture.
I think we have some incorrect data in here. When I, I read this, is Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department?
Yes.
I turn to the next page, it says Cliff Exhibit Hall.
Oh, yes. Yeah, with the architect, he, that was the last job that he did, and he probably just used his form letter and forgot to remove. And so it is, but he did the, the RE on top of that page says Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department Edition. He just took it out of that first, he didn't put it in that first letter. So I'll just get him to submit me a new letter that changes that.
Okay.
That language, but it is, these are the bids for that. I saw the bid tally, the bid forms after they were opened, and this is the correct information on the bids. So, and it is a local bidder that has been as low, actually, the two, we had two that were really close, and they're both local. So, and then the next item is the Indigent Healthcare Claims Plan. You have in your packet, stated March 31st, there are 161 claims for $103,282.88. That is part of that Safety Net Healthcare Pool, the new, the new sole committee provider. The out-of-county claims are six claims for $6,394.20. That is the indigent piece that is still under the control, the commission, that we pay directly to those three caregivers, those caregivers. We will have to come in front of the commission before July 1st with a ordinance, or is it a resolution?
I think it is.
An ordinance as part of the requirement of the statute saying that we will send the equivalent of one-twelfth of a gross receipts tax on a quarterly basis up to the state for funding of the Safety Net Healthcare Pool. So we'll bring that to you. Probably next meeting, we'll bring a notice of intent and then bring the ordinance at the following meeting, so it's done in May before June comes.
Okay.
And then we will add, one other item to the agenda, wanted to add an executive session for personnel matters. So we'll add that on to the agenda. I don't think there's anything else.
I want to add a proclamation declaring May 6th as Give Grande Day. It's just asking you to, to give as much money as you can to nonprofits, to Grand County, and the business exposure had a nice layout of all the nonprofits in the community, and they need to be supported by the public and not by the government, so this is exactly what, what needs to happen. So if we can add that somewhere, I appreciate it.
Add that to do business.
Okay. Anything else need to be added?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda is county reports, and I'm gonna start with the sheriff today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I apologize for not being here last, last meeting, but I had a family emergency, I was out of town. But I, I wanted to report, it's actually been starting to pick up because of the weather warming up, and people are coming out and enjoying the forest, doing different things, lot more activity going on. So I just cautioned the public to be a little extra careful with the, with, with what's going on out there. And in regards to the fires that were mentioned earlier, we have been dealing with fires, and I just also encourage the public to watch what they're burning and where they're burning. I mean, they've all been human caused, so we wanna monitor that a little bit more. This weekend, we're gonna participate in a drug takeback initiative. It's gonna be held at Walgreens from 10 to 2. We're gonna have two of the staff out there with boxes, asking the public to turn in any other medications that they have at home that they no longer want or need. It'll get turned over to the DEA and they'll dispose of it properly, so if anybody has medication or anything at home that they'd like to dispose of, they can just drop it off, no questions asked, it can be legal, illegal, whatever, we don't care, we just wanna get it off the streets.
Okay.
On this Saturday, May, April 26th, from 10 to 2 at Walgreens. Also, I wanted to report, I do have two openings currently in the sheriff's office for deputies. They have been advertised in-house and gonna be advertised out-house, so I encourage anybody that's interested in becoming a deputy to apply, and we'll go through the process. Other than that, it's been fairly busy, staff has been working really well, we're shorthanded a couple of people, and they've been picking up the slack, so I wanna thank my staff for what they do and continue to do so. Other than that, I have nothing else to report, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for the sheriff?
Weekend go well. Sometimes there's problems.
Yes.
On that particular weekend.
Yes.
Everything went well.
Everything went well, nothing major happened over the Easter weekend.
So it's talking about our community?
Yes, it does.
Good community.
Okay, Madam Sessions.
Chairman, Commissioners, I feel like I'm kinda repeating myself, but I think it's important that the property owners know how important it is to look at your notice of value, make sure your exemptions are on there, that's a family exemption, a veteran's exemption, and if you're 65 and older and you make less than $32,000 a year, you can freeze your value, this is the time to do it still. If you feel the value's unfair, you need to protest your value, you have until the end of the month only. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, you have anything?
I can tell, I'll hold till Thursday.
Right on. Brian, are you here to make a report today? All right.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and everyone else. Some, some brief updates. You know what, I think I'd like to actually start, I got a letter I'd like to read from Hill Regional and our Board of Trustees, and it's to our Commissioners and Mr. Sari. Dear Commissioners, now that the 2014 legislative session has concluded, and the governor has signed and or vetoed all bills that were forwarded for her consideration, Hill Regional Medical Center and the Board of Trustees... Hill Regional Medical Center and the Board of Trustees and administration want to thank our Commissioners, Mr. Sari, for their guidance and support for the hospital, and specifically with Senate Bill 268. The teamwork and leadership shown by the Commissioners was impressive and extremely valuable towards getting to the end result. We can't tell you how much we appreciate that. In particular, the diligent and strategic efforts of Chairman Brett Caston, County Manager John Sari, were effective and commendable, and again, we can't thank you guys enough. Their hard work continues to demonstrate Grant County Commissioner's commitment to Hill Regional Medical Center for all their efforts and legislative advocacy, and once again, we thank you so much. And I'd like to approach and give you all a copy of that, if that's okay.
Letter saying nice, something nice about us is...
Thank you. Good idea.
Thank you very much, Brian, I appreciate it.
Thanks again. For my report, a few things, I'll start out with our general physician updates. We finished interviews for our general surgeon, and we're moving forward with that. We don't, I'm gonna hold back on the name yet until that, that situation is finalized, but it's something our community's needed. We've been short a general surgeon for the past, you know, six or seven months, so it's gonna fill a real need for the community. Also, we've talked, I've been talking about the last three or four months, about an interventional pain specialist, Dr. Light. We were building a practice around, that practice opened about two weeks ago. Dr. Light is seeing patients, and it's, again, a great need for our community. He's the only interventional pain specialist, I think the closest one is El Paso. It's a real benefit to our community. And then we're in the process of an RFP for our ER services, our medical providers. We, we have some improvements, we've gotten a lot of feedback from our community around our emergency department services and our billing practices. So we have an RFP out there, and we will be doing some major transitional moves to improve those services to our community, another big one for our community. A little bit about Safety Net Care Pool, Mr. Sari talked about it, still a lot of details have to be finalized. I think we had an excellent meeting over at Hill Regional with our administrative staff, some of our local legislators, our Commissioners, Mr. Sari. And we're gonna be having some work groups to talk about how we can make sure that once the details are known, we do everything we can to make sure we're serving our community. So we really appreciate that. Big, our construction project, I want to update you on, regarding our linear accelerator, our radiation therapy machine, big machine. The construction is completed, they're now installing the machine as we speak. That should be done sometime towards the end of, I think, April or early May. And then it's about another 30 days of commissioning, where they go through all the specs of the machine, and it's on schedule to be reopened again, early June, mid-June. And thank you for everybody's efforts around that. One of the last parts of the report, and then I'll get into finances, was I just want to report that we held a mini-board planning retreat a couple weeks ago. It was really our first opportunity, after the dust has started to settle in this transition, to actually have our leadership meet with our board, and spend three or four hours and go over the comprehensive plan that we've been implementing since August 5th. I know we've had a couple questions in the organization and the community about, you know, what's the plan with this transition? And things are so complex in healthcare, the plan is not a one-sentence answer, the plan is not a one-page answer. It actually took us about three hours to lay out all the elements of the plan to our board, and then get into some depth with it, and then talk about some of our early outcomes of the plan. So it was a great opportunity to sit down, go through it, have the board have some input and feedback into the plan, and ask some questions about it. But that was a real good opportunity to meet as a group, not just in the board meetings where, you know, we have a specific agenda. So we really appreciate everybody's time around that. I think we're positioned better as a group of leaders and board members now to have more strategic dialogue. So we appreciated that. And last, I'll finish up with kind of the general financial overview. Now, just again, I'll remind you, the finances I'm talking about now are actually as of the end of February, so we're kind of delayed. We will do our March finances this Friday with our board, so we're a little bit behind as far as our reporting. But as of the end of February, as of December, we had broke even, we had reported that. But that's when Soul Community stopped and switched, and, you know, all that. We knew we were gonna start to, our revenue was gonna start to decline again as we wait for our supplemental payments to come in. So we ended February about 1.4 million in the red, negative. And again, we know that, we knew that was coming, and we're prepared to kind of weather this storm. We have a lot more efficiency work to do, quite a few other changes that we're continuing to implement, so we still have a lot more work to do, but we are now back in the red with our revenue. The good news is, though, that some of the work that we've been doing has had a major impact on one of our key ratios, and that is our daily spend, which is, you know, a driver of our days in cash, I want to talk about those two things. As we know, days in cash is roughly that amount of money that it costs us to run our business, the hospital, on a daily basis, and how many of those days in cash we have. It's something that many people track fairly closely. We know about a year ago, we were up to about 151 days in cash, things were good, and then, you know, the challenges occurred. And in the beginning of this fiscal year, June, we were down to about 108 days of cash. We tracked down to about 101, then 98, and 97 days of cash in November. I want you to know, by the end of February, we are now back up to 128 days of cash. And a majority of that is, you know, the great work of many caregivers in our organization around efficiencies. Now I want to jump back to that ratio, our daily spend. As of the beginning of the fiscal year, it cost us about $190,000 a day to run that business. We've driven that down, you know, in healthcare, they talk about bending the cost curve. We need to bend the cost curve, well, everywhere, counties everywhere. Our curve in our hospital for the last five, 10 years, looks like, you know, climbing Mount Everest. Costs go up every single day, every single year. So when we talk about bending the cost curve, they usually talk about changing that angle, bending how much that spend is going up. What we were able to do, though, is to push that cost curve down. So over these last seven months, seven, eight months, we've gone from $190,000 a day to now, we're down to $180,000 a day. So it's $10,000 a day shift, so, you know, do the math. We're talking about, you know, $3.6 million a year, just in our operating expenses. So I wanted to communicate that to the Commissioners and our community, that the work that we're talking about is really paying off. That's a, that's a major key financial statistic that most organizations are really struggling with and challenged by. So a lot of good work is happening there. As I said, daily, excuse me, days in cash is about 128 at this point. And at that point, I'd like to stand for questions.
Any questions for Brian?
Brian, I would like to comment on some, I've been getting some calls, and I know I've talked to some of the people on the board that were questioning replacing some of the, the business employees, and they've explained it very well to me, where I understand that we're not going to, because I would definitely be against replacing any employees by some kind of contractor coming in. But can you kind of explain what's going on there, so that the public could be aware? Because it's kind of scary to the people that are working there, and I think it needs to be explained.
Yeah, we've communicated frequently with our caregivers, let me do the big explanation. In healthcare, a major part of our transition, in healthcare, everybody knows, or many people know, that there is a lot of waste because of really complex systems. And we've talked about this a couple times in our meetings. One of the major savings that we're looking for and working towards to turn around our organization is in our revenue cycle. We've talked about this, really complicated. People enter our hospital from various points, different insurances, different plans, different paperwork needed. They go into our building, they get treated, documentation is required, that goes to coding, it's just complex all the way through. Then back to our billing office, then they send it out for payment. We could get denied if a number, one little number was wrong, you know, it's just a really complex system. So historically in healthcare, we know that that's where some of your savings can be achieved. That's where you're leaving money on the table. So we talked initially, previously, that wasn't really a topic that was talked about in our organization. After August 5th, we, of course, did an analysis of our revenue cycle. That's where we discovered at the time, there was $15 million in uncoated claims, you know, sitting in our, in our medical records department. We had $10 million in denials. We had lost $800,000 in Medicare RAC audits, where they say, well, you know what, we, you didn't have the right documentation, you didn't do this right. So we, you know, there's 25, 30 million dollars in our revenue cycle that we needed to get back into, into our bottom line. Now remember, that 30 million dollars, that's before, we built, that's billed dollars, not collected dollars. Collected is about a third of that. So that brief little lead-in was, wanted to remind everybody, there's a lot of money in the revenue cycle. And clearly, we were not being effective with our previous processes around the revenue cycle. So we put a lot of effort and a lot of work into creating some plans around that. We weren't recouping that money quick enough. We were able to drive that unbilled, uncoated revenue from, it actually got up to 20 million, now it hovers around 3 to 4 million, which is where it should be. But we were not clearing up our denials process quick enough. You know, after six months, we hadn't made enough movement. So we pulled in, you know, like many people do, an external agency, a company to come in and do an assessment, and help us see what else we need to do, and help us prioritize our efforts. So, you know, we do that many times, you know, we talk about outsourcing. I want you guys to know that the hospital outsources many, many services already. But, you know, our purchased services, we have many, many different contracts. So we already outsource a bunch of the hospital work. We don't do everything ourselves. And I could give you a list of all the things we outsource. So I want to be clear, we already do that, and we are gonna, from time to time, outsource elements that we're not being effective with, or that we don't have the internal capacity to do. Anytime we do it, we always do an assessment, can we do it in-house? But as I say, we already outsource a significant number.
And I think that's understood, I just would not want to see anybody get replaced by outsourcing.
Yeah.
Now, if we're gonna add, add to, you know, to getting things stabilized through outsourcing, that's fine.
And I would echo that, none of us want to see anybody replaced. However, I don't want to stand here and make a promise about any of our services, I just want to be honest. That's one of the differences in the past.
That's all we can ask for.
We're not gonna say, oh, we're never gonna do it. We're critically analyzing every service line, every department for opportunities for improvement. When we can do it internally, obviously, that's what we're gonna do. If we ever need to go external, or if we have to replace anybody, there will be a lot of due diligence, there's discussion with the board, we don't take that lightly. But the revenue cycle, 30 million dollars sitting there, we need to pull that into our bottom line. So we're putting a lot of effort into that, and using internal, external expertise, anything we can to make sure that happens. I appreciate the question.
I'd just like to say, thank you for the turnaround, of course, and thank you for the explanation, appreciate it.
Thank you. See you in a couple weeks.
Joseph?
Morning, Chairman, Commissioners. This morning, our count on our population is 68 inmates. In the month of April, our average population was approximately 77 inmates, with a high of 88. On April 14th, in a low of 67, which was yesterday morning. We have hired a new detention officer, and she's halfway through the 160-hour, brand-new basic detention officer training, and we are in process of hiring another detention officer. The lieutenant, the training sergeant, and three officers attended the sheriff's conference in Albuquerque, where they received training from the New Mexico Department of Corrections. The New Mexico Department of Corrections had their Security Threat Intelligence Unit do training, which included drugs, synthetic drugs, drug trends, gangs, classification, and contraband. Also, we are in contact with Western, their social work department, and we're talking to them about having the graduate students go to the jail and do their internship there, with the professors overseeing, doing group therapy and individual therapy, which might go in line with inmate support program. I also had the privilege of attending the Southwest New Mexico Leadership Program that Western put on, and I graduated on April 10th. And I'd like to thank the county for giving me the opportunity to attend that class. I learned a lot, and it was a very, a very good class, and gave us very good resources on that also. One thing I'd like to mention real quickly, is part of our leadership class, we did a class project, which our class project this year is collecting items for kids in transition into, into foster care. So what we're doing, and we have a drop-off box here in the county, in the public library, and at Western, and all throughout Luna County and Hidalgo County also, we're collecting gently-used or new tote bags, or any kind of bags, and toiletries such as travel toothbrushes, travel-sized soap, shampoos. And also, we are taking donations that can be made out to the Western Foundation, WNMU Foundation. We are taking donations through May 1st, and we're the first class of the Southwest New Mexico Leadership Class to actually carry over and sustain this project, and we're gonna try and sustain it for the next three years.
Okay, any questions?
Good, good job.
Thanks, Joseph. Brandon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'll just start with Public Works, Baton Park, you know, we did the stairs, Commissioner Ramos had asked for it, down the consensus stand, made those a little bit safer. We are still working on a bid to finish the railing, bidding out the parking lot, striping, not the repaving, I've said that several times, but I mean the striping, so hoping that will be in by the end of this week. Working on keeping the fields in good conditions for the local league's that are practicing and other tournaments. I want to thank the road department and Earl and his staff for bringing out the millions. I know he's, they wanted to do that, I think, I'm not sure, but we appreciate it. I think it's, it's made the park look a lot nicer, people parking, and, you know, as soon as the rains come and it starts to settle in good, I think it'll make, make the park look really nice. The detention center installed a new water heater, the new one actually burned out, but we were able to get that replaced free. Just, we were able to make some calls, Justin did that, he's working real hard. It worked on the Sallyport doors, working right, putting the sensors so that they would work properly when the officers come in and out. The HVACs have been completed, working properly, those were done by train, they did a real good job, and so now, you know, hopefully we won't have any problems with that. Compton Center continuing to stay very busy with the events that are taking place. Now that, you know, I talked about that at the last meeting with graduation, the stuff coming up, and birthday parties, and weather warming up, a lot of the events going on there. Cleaning out some of the scrap portions from the back rooms, and making some more space available if we don't need it, but we're hoping to clean out some of those back rooms. I had a lot of the stuff that was left over from the call centers that were there, a lot of the desks that don't really match, nothing matches, and so we're getting that stuff cleaned up, working with the, some of the workers that come in the morning from the courts, and having them work on that stuff and help cleaning up. Finished the roof, the base hardware, all the leaks have been sealed, the work has been done. Term coat was looking, looking at price for the complete sealant of the entire building. They were gonna give us some quotes on that. We're just preparing for the upcoming spring and summer, doing some weed control and spring prepping, making sure that our facilities are up and running, air conditioning and all that, and so forth. DWI program, they had the teammates, as you know, I talked about that as well at the last meeting, they had over 300 kids come through there. It was, the headline was breaking bad habits. I think it was successful, if we can get to one kid, you know, to try to keep them off alcohol and drugs, and pregnancy, and prescription drugs, and the whole things that go along with the peer pressures of our young adults. At this time of year, we, we think it's been a success. The senior program, working, have no issues there. Coda Camino's still working on, hopefully, the, Luna County is having the annual NMEC conference this year, and so we're working on helping them out with, with transit there. I'm gonna get with Kim this week and see where we're at with that. Fires, I really want to thank the commission, I appreciate and enjoy... Fires, I really want to thank the commission, I appreciate John as well, and Abby working hard on, on this proclamation to make sure that we understand, you know, what kind of danger and drought we're in from a community standpoint, just making it, and now, now the thing is to make people more aware of it. I mean, we can put the restrictions in place, we can tell people over and over again, but we're still gonna have it. I want to thank the volunteer fire departments, I want to thank Silver Fire, I want to thank the U.S. Forest Service, all of us working together to make sure that, number one, that we protect lives first, property second. And so, we had one minor injury in the fires that we had, but nothing major, so, so the safety of our firefighters, the training is all taking place. It's all hands-on training now for a lot of the volunteers, and I want to thank Joe Chavis from the Rural Fire Association, all the chiefs on down the line from our nine fire departments in Grant County, Silver Fire, Kim Hydrick, who's done a great job. I'm working on the CWP plan with the town of Silver City, working in Wind Canyon. I went out and met with the Burrowman Homestead people, looked at water sources out there, ways, escape routes, and so forth. So I'm working with the community of Grant County, trying to put together our own CWP plan, but also working with the town of Silver City and Silver Fire, Jeff Allen, and Nick Sisello is here in the audience as well, working very hard and trying to make sure that we put together a county-wide or community-wide protection plan. I do have some, if I can, you know, say something about Joe Kennedy, he passed away. He was a former station chief at Tyrone, he also was the chief out at Plius. So I just want to, my condolences to him and his family, we lost him a couple of days ago. The chipper, the chipper is up and well. I want to, again, thank Abby again for all the hard work that she did, getting all that information. I just got with Mr. Potter this morning, I'm in the process of getting all the information picked up so we can get that out to the public and start using that. I think that's about it, Commissioners, unless you have any other questions. Again, I want to thank you for the proclamations. I think we're all in line, I know the Forest Service is gonna go into, I think, stage one, I don't want to speak for them, but I think stage one restrictions, which will only allow fires in designated areas, or campfires in designated areas. I know, again, I was on the phone with Mr. Gregel from the FMO for the state, they are drafting a letter right now to the governor's office for the committees to look into their drought conditions and take appropriate, appropriate action. So I want to thank you for that. Other than that, unless you have any other questions, that's all I have.
Question?
No. Just a comment, Randy, I want to thank you for getting the surveys to us on the, on the Cora Camino. We'll get those out to Cliff. I was hoping that Michael would be here today, but he's not, but I'll get them out tonight. Thank you.
And Baton Park looks great out just after this last weekend. You guys are doing a really good job with limited resources, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Earl, what's going on?
Business as usual. We've about got all of our LGRF roads patched, I've got a little bit to do out there at Members, we're gonna start hauling, and we've got about a little over two thousand tons of chips to start hauling in next week. That'll pretty much take us all of May. And like I said earlier, the first two weeks of June, we've got scheduled to do our chip seal, and I'm gonna try and get Hurley's done at the same time, and I'll wait on Bird and Silver City whenever they decide to do theirs. That's about it.
Okay. Anthony, what you been doing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I've been traveling again last week. I attended, of course, we had the public meeting for the AWSA in, out there in Cliff, and input group meeting. Since I saw, Interstate Stream Commission is moving along with the projects, trying to complete all the engineering, as well as the view of reclamation, trying to complete their portion of the studies by July. So hopefully, we'll know some more in the next coming months on exactly where our project, as well as the different projects around Grant County stand. And second, I attended, last Tuesday, I attended a meeting directly related to an environmental impact statement with the, with the Mexican gray wolf. There were some things that I was concerned about, although I'm not very educated about the overall program, some of the things that had changed, I was concerned about is the expansion of their release and relocation range. I think that they were, they want to expand the full length of the recovery area, which would include anywhere in the, in the forest. I expressed my concerns about the fact that the town of Silver City, the Mimbres, and even in the Gila Cliff area are surrounded by forest area. And relocation of a problem, animals, or, or actually releasing animals in, in some locations could be detrimental to populated areas, so. So we had some concerns there. They felt, they are going to try and address those concerns before the EIS, the draft EIS is put out. Another portion was, is that protection, there are some issues with protection of private property, protection of, of range, leased properties, which would be in the forest where people have leases for their cattle, how they can protect those, that, those livestock, like you can protect your personal pets even in the forest, your, your children, of course. They already have implemented that if, if you are threatened, you can either scare or, or even at some, in some instances, you can actually terminate the life of a wolf if it's an extreme threat. So, so as I get a little bit better understanding, I can have probably a better report. I guess my first meeting with the, as a cooperating agency, I apologize, I don't have that. MOU, that is an MOU that we need to, that we need to get taken care of before their next meeting. I'll make sure we'll have it on our next agenda.
Can we get that on Thursday's agenda?
We certainly can, we have a draft, we have a draft already, they've sent to us.
The way I think we want to be at the table, if we're not a cooperating agency, we're not at the table at all, so.
That's, that's great, and I don't think that they're gonna have another meeting anytime soon. I would assume that, that we have a little bit of time to get the MOU signed. So if we can't get on this, this week's meeting agenda, we can certainly do it in two weeks, so.
I thought this meeting was forced to put other things on the agenda, if we can get it, I'll request it to be put on the agenda.
I know, I know that I forwarded the draft, I think, to the chairman and to, to John.
Okay. Abby, any, any time in these meetings, did they announce how many wolves they wanted to introduce, and what is their goal?
That was one of the questions, and I would, I would have to say, there was a lot of cooperating agencies there, both from Arizona and New Mexico. The tribal governments were representative, the counties, even some municipalities were representative. In response to your question, Commissioner Ramos, they didn't have a definitive number of wolves that they want. The explanation was that they, what they're trying to attempt to do is trying to make sure that they've got good genetics, a good sound, how would you say, population. And the questions that the, that the cooperating agencies had to do with, well, if you, if you know what genetics have to be in order to get a good sound population, and you know the area that they're gonna have to contain, and you know the population, a good, healthy population for a certain amount of acreages or square miles, then why don't you have a number of wolves that you want to do? And, and they brought, their concerns, what's happened in, I mean, in another United States where, where they didn't have a good sound plan, the population exploded after they got so many wolves in the area, and now they're having issues trying to, trying to contain those things. So, so there's, so there's some additional worries about what, and that question was brought up, but they didn't have an answer.
And one of my concerns when it comes to genetics is, I would not like to see the northern wolf come, come and be interbred just to get good genetics, because we're looking at a two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred-pound wolf. So I don't think we, I personally don't want to see that around here. It's, it's scary enough to see what we've already got, when they're around your, your family, when you're, when you're out in the wilderness.
Well, apparently, they're at the point now where they have enough pairs, and they have enough wolves that they seem to think that they, that they may double in numbers over the next ten years, and double each year. And so I think that that's, that's kind of, that is very concerning. And, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't address it, they, they kind of kept it to, they didn't have a number, and, and they tossed it around a bunch, but they didn't want to set a certain number with, so they kind of just kind of did a song and dance with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, but.
Yes, sir.
I'll stay on top of things.
And let's see, we're gonna put it on the agenda, we need to address it upfront. And the reason being, you know, the price of beef, one of the problems has been with the drought. And then now, if you get the wolf out there and then kill some more, it's gonna impact all of us even more, so we need to be on top of it. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Currently, livestock owner that has a permit in a recovery area can get a permit to exterminate a wolf or to do, or try and get relocation of a wolf, those type of things, but it usually takes a significant amount of time. And so one of the recommendations was that, that if you were actually, actually saw a wolf killing one of your livestock, what could you do about it at that time? And so there's, those are tossing some more things around about how you can protect your, your private property, and, and they said, well, you have these lease agreements, and these lease agreements are so that you can have your private property on federal lands, but yet, there's nothing you can do about a wolf or a pack of wolves coming and killing all of what your private, all your private property. You can protect them if they're on your land, but if they're on, on the forest lands, you can't, so. It was, it was kind of a major issue. There was nine hours, almost ten hours of discussion on Tuesday.
Wow. Well, thanks for bringing that MOU, and I really think we need to support it, especially, I mean, our main job is to secure the health, safety, and welfare for our residents, and we definitely need to say so.
Yeah, and we're kind of, I would like to mention to the Commissioners, we're kind of late on the whole process, so. There was a comment period all the way since November, and there is, there will be a draft EIS, I'll make sure I forward it to all the Commissioners, and try and highlight some of the things that I was concerned about, and maybe you might be also. The rest of the week I spent at the Flood Team Managers Conference in, in Clovis, and...
Stay flat in Clovis, have a flight.
Well, and that was, that was some of the things that it talks about at the conference, is that, New Mexico, in relation to, let's say, a place like Florida has over two million and some, the fund insurance policies. In New Mexico, we have around fifteen thousand, but yet we pay the same amount of money, so. So that was one of the questions, it's, it's amazing.
That relationship, though, right?
That's, that's just the way it works, you know what I mean, and so, but there wasn't questions, there's, there's a lot of things surrounding flood drainage management, and, and hopefully, we had some issues with our maps here. I brought up the fact that, that our maps aren't any good, and they, they kind of put it back to, there was not enough public comment, that kind of stuff, and I dropped the fact that, you know, you get, you only get a good product as, as the funding that's available. And so, so they, they took note and got to get back to wherever. But anyway, that's, that's all I got.
Anything else? Okay, that's it. Thank you very much, I think we've done all the lectures, we'll move to John.
Just wanted to bring up that next week is the Tour de la Gila, so we're starting to see bikes, bike teams come into town, more cyclists out on the road, so everybody needs to be careful when they're out there driving. The races start on the thirtieth, which is Wednesday of next week. On the twenty-ninth, they're going to be at the conference center doing the registrations and everything, so we're worked with them. They're gonna set a nice little, nice little space up in there, we're gonna go over after the meeting, Randy and I and Justin, and take a look at it. They're gonna have a little store set up in there for the race apparel as people are coming in to register, and registering the pro teams, as well as the amateur. So we'll be registering over there on Tuesday, and then the pro racers start off on Wednesday, and then all racing classes will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday finish up. So it's gonna be really busy. I noticed last night, one of the teams, I think teammate in our block is in town with their big van and all their bikes, so we're gonna start seeing them, so people need to be careful. We had, Western had their cleanup this weekend, they filled two forty-yard roll-offs of material from people's homes. It's something that they do as a volunteer community service each year in the spring. We worked with them last year, we worked with them again this year. So they did that, and that's, I came in yesterday and noticed that they filled both of the containers again with brush and, and debris from people's yards, which is, helps with our fire issues. We've got some equipment in the auction that's gonna be happening May third in Arenas Valley with Dickerson, they're putting on an auction. So they came to us, Mr. Moore went down to his yard with Mr. Dickerson and found some equipment, he's hauling it over there, so that we can get a lot of that old equipment cleaned up, the old cars that we had, and a couple of fire trucks. So that's happening, so we're finally getting some of that out of here. Where's it gonna be? Turner's, please, right there by the J.J. signs. That's where they'll be holding that, we've started already moving equipment, so it'll be May third. The other big item is the budget. Where we're at is we've sent out, Linda has sent out the budget request forms to the different departments, so they can start looking at where their costs were, where their budgets were, and their actuals in the past, start to give us some recommendations, I've met with a couple people on it. We've been looking at our revenues, looks like we're probably going into the preliminary budget, we're gonna budget to stay pretty close to flat. I haven't gotten with Mary on what we think the increase in the property tax valuation will be, we have talked about the copper production, we're gonna see a little increase in copper production, it looks like. But just to play it safe, we're gonna try and keep as flat numbers as we can, 'cause we don't know our final values until after the protest period, which ends April thirtieth. And then rates are not set, brought to the commission until probably about the September timeframe. So after the protest period, typically what we do is, Ms. Guthrie will run the formula she has to try and calculate a rate, which last year she was right on the money with, and so she'll calculate a rate for me, so I've got an idea of where our tax rate will be, so we can start to forecast what we think our property tax will be coming in. Met with the sheriff, we've got some vehicles that are getting higher in mileage, we're trying not to. When I started here, almost nine years ago, we were driving three hundred and four hundred thousand mile vehicles for the sheriff's department vehicles. We were having to call other officers to pick up officers on the side of the road, because their car broke down on the way to a call sometimes. So we've worked at replacing that through Stone Garden, through some of our own general fund monies. Now I think we've got almost all our vehicles, nothing is really more than a hundred thousand, we've got a few that are right at that level that we're gonna replace now.
Continue to take into consideration getting a, a really good, good car, which gives us some good mileage on it. I know we had set a standard of eighteen miles to the gallon, hopefully we can continue to do that.
No, and we've looked at, I'll get with the sheriff more, the last vehicles we've bought were, have been the Explorer, the Ford Explorers, the, they make it in a police pursuit package. Those vehicles are getting about twenty to twenty-five miles a gallon, just depends on how hard you have to get into them, if they're on a call or not. So those have been working out really good, we've got four of those in the sheriff's office right now. And so we'll look at that, that's one of the considerations we have. Actually, looking at the fuel budget with the sheriff, we have decreased the fuel budget over the last year, and also, he's worked very hard at his overtime budget, and it's one of the lowest it's been in the last five years. Right now, his actual overtime expenditures are under budget, which they haven't been there for quite some time because of the different, the nature that, I think when we looked at it, two, three years ago, I think the overtime, the actual overtime costs were two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars for the sheriff's office. This year, he's under a hundred thousand dollars right now. So he's made a big effort to curtail the overtime and make sure it's only necessary overtime, based on a case or those issues, so that's been really good. His budget is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in that, so he's under budget currently. And so that's, we're gonna continue to work on going forward, because we are now on the twelve-hour shifts, the commission has given them, the officers, so we're finally starting to recoup some of that expenditure we put out there, and seeing these reductions. So our plan is, Linda and I'll meet with everybody and then come in front of the commission, we'll get you a preliminary budget, and then come in front of you in May, the first meeting in May, and have that hearing, see if there's any other changes. For the preliminary budget, I was really gonna use the direction we had in the past, unless the commission has any other directions. unless the commission has any other directions. We were gonna keep travel at the $1,500 per elected and 1,500 per chief deputy as we did in the past and 1,500 for the directors, um, and try and keep all those types of line items, um, similar to how we had them before. We're gonna look at the actuals and if we have something that just has been blowing the budget, we will adjust for that. But otherwise, we're gonna try and follow that same standard that we had in the past unless the commission has any other direction. We've never raised our mileage over the 32 cents that it's been there for, heck, I think about 12 years. It was there before I got here. Um, it's been here the whole time since I've gotten here. So it's, uh, so, and people are using that and so we're seeing that. Um, we've been talking with, uh, Town of Silver City, trying to partner up with them and some fuel so that we can start to get some better discounts on bulk fuel and maybe even reduce our fuel costs more. It's helped us out in the road department 'cause we had purchased a 10,000 gallon diesel tank down there. So we purchased tankers of gas and, uh, it's really reduced the fuel cost for Mr. Moore because he's not paying pump price for it every time we try and get some gas in, some diesel fuel. So those are kind of where we're at on the budget. That's the main things we're looking at. If there's anything special the commission wishes us to look at, um, let us know. But typically for that preliminary, when we come in, we don't look at outside funding sources. We usually save that for the, the final budget because we wanna make sure we take care of basic services first. And then once we get a truer picture of our revenues after, uh, the preliminary, which is due June 1, the finals due July 31st, in that two-month timeframe, we get a better look at our revenues, we can make some decisions on outside funding sources.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess the only thing, and I, I say this every year, I'm still concerned that we're funding reoccurring expenses with potentially non-reoccurring funds within particular pill. And I, I think that, that in the, the next couple of years, we really gotta tackle that issue. Uh, not only that, the, uh, capital outlay from the state is woefully inadequate. Um, we've been sitting here begging every year just to, to get enough to finish this building. We still have a courthouse that's gonna become crumbling. We have a convention center that's half-finished. We need to do a detox, um, continuum of care unit. We have so many needs and, and we're not able to do them through, um, the avenues that are available to us. So I, I would implore the commission in next year that, that we really sit down and, and buckle down and say, this is the time when we're gonna make a change in Grant County.
And I agree that in the, the one part about the, this continuum building we're looking at, this whole service residential detox type of building is, it's actually the county stepping up trying to do something for the state because they're not doing it for themselves. They're not giving us anything to help us out, plus they're not helping their own agencies. So we're trying to help because it's a problem we're all dealing with down here and the state won't step up and take care of it themselves. So we're having to step up and try and take care of that for them. And we're seeing more and more and more of that every day. We continue to get the state to call us and ask us for help. Uh, and so it seems to start to be the other way around. We're beginning to fund the state instead of the state funding us.
And we spent the first three years here reorganizing, getting our audits back in shape, getting the, the budgets in, in place. Uh, John was integral in getting all that done. The commission was integral in getting all that done. And it's time to take the next step. So.
This is Jen.
Yes?
Let's have a quick update on Lomo Verde. Um, and the last time, uh, we updated you on that, we had two, uh, remaining resident or parcel owners that we weren't able to get a hold of. Um, so we were talking about actually changing the plan of moving the, um,
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac. But good news, um, both of them have gotten back to me and have verbally said that if we send them the paperwork, they will go ahead and agree to the dedication. Um, so we're in the process of getting them that paperwork and hopefully we'll get it back soon.
All right. Commissioner, you have anything you gotta hold off?
You know, I'd just like to say, uh, thanks to all the, all of our employees throughout the county. Our county's been doing well. We thank you all for keeping within your budgets. Um, the county's moving forward. Everyone's working hard and, uh, thank you for all you do. Um, just wanna thank all the firefighters that have been responding to these fires. I mean, it's great.